Well, the only times that I know for sure they've done it were on Thursday on Monday. So I think I was saying, I think next week at the earliest, I can move them open. I mean, there's a camp, as I said, we have this point back there. I kind of checked with her after you moved them. Yeah, broadly speaking, no other than Thursday through this afternoon. She just, would she not move them away? She had them in the food truck.
Call this meeting to order. Those in attendance, please rise. Join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled August 1st, 2022 city council meeting. If you're a guest with us tonight, as you come through those doors, which will be to my right and to your left, uh, there's a sign in sheet on the desk. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. Would also like to make the audience and, uh, council aware and remember that our clerk has a huge election tomorrow, our city staff has a huge election tomorrow that they're gonna be very busy with all day. So if we could be respectful of their time and try to be as brief as possible, then that would be a good and courteous thing to do. City clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Councilperson Soha?
Present.
Brighter?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Horsey? Sharp?
Here.
Stuccio?
Here.
Pratt?
Here.
Sizer?
Here.
Mayor Stockford?
Here.
A. President.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of agenda. City manager or any council members have any changes to make in the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion on the floor for Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We've got an agenda. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will, podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And please ensure, uh, if you're commenting on something, that it has a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda tonight. Podium is now open. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the podium and move into the consent agenda. We've got approval of bills, city MBPU claims and payroll, um, July 14th, July 21st, city council minutes of July 18th, PIPA minutes of May 17th, planning commission minutes of June 15th, PIPA program committee minutes of June 28th, election commission minutes of June 30th and July 14th, BPU minutes of July 12th, July 2022 border review minutes. Um, one, two, three, Hillsdale College items, freshman convocation, source event, street use agreement and welcome party, street use agreement. Uh, Hillsdale Community Foundation request to block parking spaces, public drug requests for a street closure and noise variance for an end of summer event. Farmers market street closure agreement and ratification of signatures, uh, the annual bow hunt within the city limits. And then two BPU items, uh, an influent pump and a tertiary pump. Any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. Motion on the floor for Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer. Now have a roll call, city clerk.
Councilperson Brighter?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
Kater?
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we will move into communications petitions. The first item is the Hillsdale train events. Let me catch up in my packet, but as you guys all know, um, the Fort Wayne historic train company is working with, uh, the Northeastern Indiana Rail Railroad to bring, uh, historic passenger train into town. I believe the dates are August 27th, August 28th and October 1st. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Um, uh, unfortunately, they, when they sent me the initial flyer with the events, uh, it said August 26th, August 22nd and October 1st. So there is a highly, highly, um, shared flyer out there that has the wrong dates on it. So hopefully we can get those corrected in the public's mind. So they know, uh, when the date actually is. I know there's a lot of people working on it. I know, uh, Gianna Green and Felicia Finch and, and Heather Trishka Stuccio are working to, um, be a welcoming committee of sorts and a lot of our businesses are gonna stay open late on that day. I mean, we're supposed to, we're talking like 400 people to our downtown. Really exciting stuff though. Could be, I mean, a huge weekend for our downtown businesses. Any discussion about that? And item number B in communications petitions, BPU roundup program. It's my understanding we've got some community, uh, uh, action agency representatives with us tonight.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Toby Berry and I'm the CEO of Community Action Agency and I brought Laura Reum, who is the director of our community programs. Uh, we wanted to have an opportunity, if there were any questions that you might have, give you some information about the roundup program and how we utilize it. Um, and who is eligible for it. So I believe you all got a handout. Um, our eligibility, uh, they obviously have to be a BPU customer, have to have household income levels at or below 200% of poverty. Um, served once a year on a rolling year, although there are some exceptions that can be made. Um, right now, we do not utilize a cap or require a state emergency relief application. Uh, from October 1st of 2021 to 7/31/2022, so we're on a October 1st fiscal year. We've utilized $22,371 from BPU Roundup, um, provided assistance 45 times to 42 households, so 114 people, 46 children, 68 adults, with an average of 533 per household. Additionally, we utilized $14,000, over almost $15,000 in other funding to pay BPU bills. So whenever we have an opportunity, if we have funding from other sources and people are eligible for that, we try to utilize those dollars so that our BPU dollars go farther, so that we can serve more people in the community. We currently have $36,000 to assist BPU customers. And then we provided some historical information there from 2019 and 2020. Um, since 2009, uh, we received, uh, just over $436,000 and spent just over $400,000 to assist BPU customers in Hillsdale. Are there any questions that you might have for us?
Anybody have any questions? What is, what is this? A program eligibility in SCR? What is that?
State Emergency Relief Application. So that's with the Department of Health and Human Services at the state of Michigan.
Okay. So do households that are, um, trying to use this program, do they come directly to Community Action Agency or do they go to?
They come directly to us.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Soha?
I think, thank you for your explanation. Um, but I think something that the public has really made clear to us is they would appreciate accountability. They, we couldn't find like how the money was spent. There was, it appears there's no accountability there. I, um, and that's something that if there were a little more transparency there to part how the funds are transferred from BPU to the account and how they're ma-managed and allocated, that would be appreciated by our community. And then the other thing that was really spoken very adamantly was that it was not voluntary. You know, and I, I appreciate it. I will continue to support the cause if, when, uh, the opt-out letter comes, but I think that was just a big point of contention, you know? Don't, don't force me to be philanthropic. And, um, so I would just appreciate, and I think they, in the letter, that they motioned for that, correct? That there would be an opt-out or something in the future bill?
Yes, that's correct. But they do not, you know, this is the city's program. So they, this isn't their program to set up. Um, this is established by state statute, which, uh, in 2009, um, with the financial crisis, that's when this was established originally to help those folks who lost their jobs and the businesses that went out, uh, ultimately, the people losing their employment. Um, and it's been in place since 2009. Um, so there was a little bit of time in between, uh, you know, this going out. So they, they've had little to do with that end of it. They've just administered the funds. The correction, for the most part, it will be handled on our, uh, BPU.
Yeah, yeah. No, we appreciate what you guys do at Community Action Agency for sure. Um, and I understand very much that Board of Utilities and Community Action Agency are two separate entities. Um, but I'm curious, why, if we're gonna have a program like this, why does it have to be administered by a third party like the BPU? Users have their own, the own discretion to make these decisions to decide it?
Because we don't work with the folks at, at income levels or at poverty levels. Um, we can't verify that information. They do all that third party. Um, you know, we hear a lot of stories. We, it's hard for us to, to judge one way or the other, but Community Action Agency works with these folks all the time. Um, and they know all the processes in order to qualify.
Yeah, and I think the other benefit, um, one, we don't, Community Action Agency doesn't get any money to do this, this program. There's no administrative fee. We don't charge BPU. There's nothing. The money comes in from BPU and the money goes back out to BPU to pay for client bills. Um, I think the benefit of having it with Community Action, um, is that clients can come in with this emergent need, but they may also have other needs that we can address through other programs that we have at the, at the agency. So it's kind of a wraparound full service, um, where we can help citizens of, of Hillsdale.
Okay, but Board of Utility money is only used for the.
Absolutely. Yep, and my, we can verify every dime that's come in and every dime that's gone out and every client that it's been used on. We have a database where we put all the information in and we track it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The contentious points were never about what Community Action Agency does or your operations over there were never called into question. I think a large amount, a significant enough amount of our residents in Hillsdale did not know that this program existed. They don't pay enough attention to their electric bill. They get it in the mail. They pay it, like most people do. They don't read through all the fine print.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of people didn't even know this program existed. And the other huge point of contention was that it's an opt-out program. You automatically get enrolled in it. And, you know, even at the end of the line at the supermarket, you wanna round up your bill to give to Toys for Tots or whatever. Um, and that is most certainly the ethical way to do it. So, and that has nothing to do with your operations. That has to do with our operations. So I hope you don't feel offended by questions being asked about.
Nope, not at all.
Councilman Sharp?
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the word shady used to you guys. It wasn't used by me and, uh, somebody I very much respect. That was his opinion. Um, back in 2008, I worked at Hillsdale Tool. I was let go. That was a job I was there for almost 34 years. So I had to face up the line. Fortunately, I did not have to use you guys, but it was good to know that option was out there, that actually ever came to it. I think what you guys are doing is a great thing. I don't see any questionable things going on here. And I will continue to stay in the program to round it up. I, it'll help somebody, somebody in this community. I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Bruce. Any more questions? Comments? Have you had something to add?
Yep, I was just going to, it's in the packet as well. It's in the BPU minutes. But after going through the program and working with staff, this is what the BPU board, um, decided or motioned to do with this. Um, it was motioned by Mr. Hotch and supported by Ms. Howard, um, that, uh, BPU continue the operation roundup program with, uh, the following changes. So, um, every three years they're going to send out, no, so every three years they're going to send out an opt-out form in the customers' utility bills. Um, and then they have redesigned the website where the opt-out program is, is pretty prevalent. So anyone who goes there to see, to set up a new, a new account will see that. Um, they're gonna do more further education about the program and how it operates by permissioning the criteria, uh, and the eligibility, and then, uh, also do some work on statistical, statistical reporting of the program for the website so that, uh, um, people can pull more information out of what's been in the past. In the past, there really hasn't been any information about how many people have benefited and how many dollars have been sent over. And how it's sent over is monthly. They receive a check from the BPU from the Roundup. So from the previous month, CCA has sent the check and you'll see that in the, uh, the finance committee season reports and that's in the council minutes, they would receive a check for $2,500 for the previous month. So that's how it's handled. These are the changes we're making. You can actually see the redesign of the website. Um, it's pretty prevalent there and, uh, explains the whole process. And again, um, we're also going to send out the forms every three years, um, for those long-term customers who might want to change their, um, their giving if, if, uh, if they like to. So those are the changes the BPU board does.
Those sound like really great changes in the name of transparency.
I agree.
Any more discussion? Councilman Beer?
Uh, I'd just like to thank, uh, you guys for the, all the work that you do on behalf of the, uh, the impoverished in this area. So, and I'll be honest with you because I do read my literature and I opted out many, a long time ago. So, but because of this current situation, I have to thank you because it's not that much money and it goes to a good cost. So. Excellent question, man.
Yeah. Uh, Toby?
Yeah.
Have you guys seen an uptick in contact, uh, based on our current inflation and situation?
Yeah, we have a little bit. So I think during COVID, we saw a large, a larger increase of people needing assistance with bills. And we've been kind of even back out again over the last couple of months, but we did see an increase.
Thank you.
Why? It's a fault of money. Doesn't get used? It just gets, it just stays in the account? Just a rotating? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it. Okay. We've got no introduction, adoption of ordinances or public hearing tonight, so we will move into old business item A, transfer station purchase and sale agreement. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as the summary states, you know, this was something we discussed back in May and in June at council meetings, uh, that we were approached by Modern Waste with the idea of purchasing the transfer station at 425 Carlton Road. Um, we, if you recall, in June, we had a draft that we were working through with legal counsel and trying to finish the negotiation on. Uh, we have got that draft to a final state. Um, that being said, uh, we have a purchase price for the facility of $875,000. We have a finalized purchase agreement. We do have Steve here from Modern Waste. If you have any questions for them. But, um, we do have, I believe it's three years left on our hauling agreement with them, um, currently. And then I do know that they plan on trying to expand their, uh, business, uh, here.
Congratulations.
The transfer station. If you wanna go, Steve?
Thank you, David, Councilman.
Hi, Steve. Thanks for coming.
No problem.
Thanks for having us. No, we appreciate it. We appreciate this opportunity.
Um, bought, uh, bought the Modern Waste from the previous owner about a year ago. Two days from now will be, uh, one year. And, uh, I believe we met, uh, we've built a good relationship now with, uh, with this community. And, uh, you know, it's a pretty solid investment, as you guys just heard, um, in the business and ultimately in the, back into this community. So we're excited about this opportunity and we thank you very much for it. So. Appreciate it.
I think it's a pretty cool thing. And I'm, we're, we're always happy to divest, uh, Yeah. some of our municipal holdings, um, that cost us money. The one thing I'm getting from residents a little bit, Steve, is a concern that if the city washes their hands of it, that Modern Waste, then just has the autonomy to raise prices exponentially and they won't have any other options.
No.
So can you address that, please?
Yeah, I understand the concerns. We do, uh, business in a lot of small communities throughout this, this region now. And, uh, we're trying to hold price as much as we can, given the current climate. Um, and our intent is not to, um, gouge. Uh, we're here to run a fair and honest business and, uh, it'll continue to be your standard. So.
And I think it's important to mention, Mayor, that we, there is the, the Jefferson Township that has the transfer station as well.
They do.
It's probably easier and that will keep them somewhat competitive for sure. Because they're not too far away. So if people think.
No, if you wanna compare price with, uh, with them now, go ahead. And I have to say that, um, I know where their price is at. So.
Good. Councilman Sharp?
Do you anticipate rate increases over the next three years, other than the fuel charge you're getting us with?
At, at this point, no. I, I mean, obviously I can't foresee anything, um, maybe some cost of living stuff, but.
Okay, so let's say, look, gas prices are starting to go down. Where do we draw the line and say, okay, now you can return it back to the customers?
Have you guys seen our, um, fuel energy, kind of the way we laid it out based on the price of fuel? So everything's gonna be based on the price of fuel and how it fluctuates. So, I mean, we've been very open and transparent with, with how we're doing those, uh, uh, fuel surcharges.
And that was in the council, last council packet.
Right. Well, that was, it was a thrill for a lot of people when they heard something else is going on. And it's just.
No, it is, it is a concern. It's a concern with us too. You know, we employ a lot of people. We got well over 100, 100 employees on, on our books too. And when decent fuel goes from two something to over $5, I mean, that hurts. Yeah.
Right.
You know?
And I try to tell residents too, that we really, council really has nothing to do with the prices, even now, even though the city still owns a transfer station. We don't, um, have never used that as a bargaining tool with, we lease the property and.
The, the one point is it's good to, we're getting out of that liability that they are getting, once we saw it. It's, it's been there for all those years. It's always been a, built a new bill for everything, which was part of the requirement. And it's working out good for all everybody involved.
Yeah, we're very happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, the sir, the mayor of your last meeting that you had some expansion plans? Are you able to talk about that?
Nothing, nothing immediate. Nothing we could even put, uh, put on a piece of paper. So it's kind of all up here right now.
Fair enough.
But, uh, it definitely gives us that capability and, uh, we'll see what the future takes us.
Any more discussion? Any more questions for Steve while he's at the podium?
Oh, I will later. But we will talk soon.
Very good. Thanks for coming tonight, Steve.
Yep.
Any discussion at the council table? Uh, motion to execute the documents and make the sale?
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sizer?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Soha?
Yes.
And Brighter?
Yes.
It's all approved.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we'll move into new business. Item A, certification of abandoned property for accelerated forfeiture act. I don't see Kim with us tonight. Alan, do you wanna?
No.
No? Well, Alan, you can get out of it real easy. Just don't come to the council meeting.
I tried that. I told me ahead too.
Yeah.
So do you have any questions?
So why don't you tell them what, in effect?
So this is, this is a resolution that is required, um, annually. Um, the intent is to, when, when there is a known abandoned building that is, that where the owners have ceased paying, uh, property taxes, no longer are maintaining the structure, um, or the property. And it is clear through con, through attempted contact with the owners that they're not planning on, uh, continuing to be active with the property at all. This, normally it would be a three-year period where, um, they would cease to pay property taxes for, for two years. And then the county would, um, begin the forfeiture, the county treasurer would begin the forfeiture, uh, process. And then in the third year, they would actually, um, foreclose on the property. This allows the city to, um, speed that up by a year. So that in, that the, uh, the attempt is to be able to, um, take control of the property a year earlier and try and find a buyer that will be, um, you know, the, the county would be able to sell it to, uh, a property owner that would actually take care of the property. So the whole process stays the same. The only, the only difference is it speeds it up by a year.
All right. Any questions? For Alan?
Any examples of us having used this expedited?
Um, 135 East South Street is a good example of, of that. Um, you'd have to ask him as far as other properties.
That's for, that's the old, old, old.
Yeah. And then, and that one was, that one was unusual. Thankfully, it was an unusual case.
Yeah, and that one was abandoned.
It was abandoned.
It went through a court.
Yeah, it went through bankruptcy court. There was actually, uh, um, a, uh, an organization that was put in, in place to help clean up, not only to, to keep the property maintained, but also to clean up the, the, uh, the toxic spills that had occurred over the, over the decades. And they ran out of money and, uh, bankruptcy court said, okay, you, you're done. And so they stopped everything. They stopped maintaining, stopped paying taxes, everything. And we could have, um, and so this, this sped up our, our ability to get it, um, to get it turned over to the county so that it could go back on. So potentially it could back to the debt.
Well, thanks, Alan. Yeah, from what I've seen, the courts really, uh, will go out of their way and jump through hoops to protect people that won't pay or take care of the property. So I've seen it the last couple of years. I mean, they can't even rid people. They don't pay their rent for a year anymore. So it's just incredible. So many, I talked to so many landlords that it just can't get rid of people when they won't pay. I mean, I've got, going, going through something similar with my own house. This is the reason I bring it up. So my ex-house, I should say, my previous house.
Do you need a motion?
Yes. Yes, we need a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
So moved. Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Breyer. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it? All right, we'll move into new business. Item B, set public hearing to declare a public nuisance. This is thirty-six Haver Street. Alan? Sorry, bud.
No. This one, I was much better prepared for. I don't know how many of you drove by to see the property, but it has been a property that has been a long-term code enforcement issue. When I started, there was a, a different owner. The house, the, the previous owner passed away. The house was, the house was sold through an estate. And at the time of the sale, we instructed the new owner that until, until the property was brought into compliance, because there were multiple outstanding code enforcement violations, no one would be allowed to live there. And so the property was purchased, if I remember right, in the summer of twenty-one. And in December of twenty-one, we discovered that the owner had indeed moved into the property without bringing it into compliance. We notified her at the time, and in January, that she would have thirty days to either bring it into compliance or, or vacate the premises. And then she could continue to work on the property, but she did not be allowed to live there. She did not move out in, in, on January thirty-first and February second. We issued a citation that went to the courts. The courts, she did not show up for the court date, but there was a default judgment that said she had sixty days to bring it into compliance or vacate the premises. And that was at the, at the end of May. She still had not vacated the premises. And so we've since notified the court that she missed the deadline. And our next course of action, as far as the city is concerned, is to declare a public nuisance. So that's where we're at. And so this meeting is to ask you to set a public hearing to, to eventually pass the resolution to declare the public nuisance.
Okay. Any questions? Bruce?
Thank God, it's not worth it. But, yes, I've drove by quite a few times here recently and it's...
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. It's, I can't believe somebody's actually living in there. I mean, we actually could do an inspection, it'd be sixty-nine Westwood Street all over. There'd be mold in that house, there's got to be mold in that house. It's got to be dangerous to live in. And it, it's... There's a lot more to discuss, we need to do this.
I don't think it will, at least, you know?
Or cut the trees down, whatever those are.
Okay, if this is the next step, then... Any more questions? Motion on the floor to set a public hearing?
So moved. Support.
Motion on the floor for Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Sharp. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into new business. Item C, resolution proposed capital improvement bonds. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. This is part of the Westwood project, as well as water and sewer, as far as roads, water and sewer. In the summary, outline all the items that are intended to be addressed with the issuance of this bond. As you recall, we've talked about this numerous times, the Westwood area infrastructure project was well over four and a half million dollars. Water and sewer departments have some additional needs as well. So the issuance of the bond, that process starts with this notice. So we have to pass a resolution to publish the notice of intent for the council to issue capital improvement bonds and declare the intent to reimburse expenditures as for engineering, those type things. So this starts a forty-five day process, according to state statute, which is section five seventeen of Act thirty-four of the acts of two thousand and one. That forty-five day process gives, gives the public an opportunity to review this information. And if they choose, they could petition with, I believe it's ten percent of the electorate signatures to council in request that this go to a vote of the people. If that does not occur, then council can, can move forward with issuing the bonds for the Westwood project, as well as the water and sewer capital improvements. The item, as it's outlined, spells out all those things pretty much in detail. And then we have the resolution that makes it.
Great. Gonna be a lot of people happy with Westwood and all those streets down there get worked on, including Councilman Sizer, I'm sure.
Yeah, and at the last meeting, as you guys, the city engineer brought forward the, the special assessment component of this project, they kind of go hand in hand to make sure that, you know, we don't get too far with one and the other doesn't go, or vice versa, so that all the components of the project are approved and ready to move forward for next spring.
And Councilman Sharp, of course, you did.
What's the cost on this? Here is, because I'm reading five point, five million, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and four.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, so then, that, yep, about five point eight million, fifty-two thousand. It's a total amount, and that's the project and the water and sewer additional capital project. It has the, the resolution has a nod to exceed of six point five million. And that's because in today's environment with inflation and costs of projects, we wanted to give ourselves some room, just in case, you know, construction came in higher than we anticipated, even though we've been very conservative.
It is my word, thank you, Jesus. And I've heard, 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 it's really bad out there. It is...
One of those is your street, buddy.
No, Westwood Drive is, I'm...
Oh, okay, okay.
No, most of the beautiful homes up there have a Third World Street. I mean, that's all there is, really bad. It's a Third World Street.
I'm making a more street. Okay, Westwood Drive.
Yes. She really calls that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To the other side. Yeah.
The other side of the current tracks. Yes.
One of them has Councilman Sizer.
Lundell, which is bad, but it's not as bad as Westwood Drive.
Well, you're in the Dodge and the hot hole, that's fine. Come on.
Yeah, when I'm biking around.
But it's bad.
Okay. Good stuff.
So this just starts at forty-five day window to move forward.
All right, it's a resolution to acquire and construct capital improvements, publish notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds, and declare office intent to reimburse expenditures with bond proceeds. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
We will move into new business. Item D, the last, um, item in new business, downtown social district. So I met a couple of weeks ago with the proprietors of the Pub and Grub, Hillsdale Brewery, the Don Theater, the Elks, and Fifty-Five Broad Street. And this is all their initiative, they want to see this happen. Since this became public, I was also contacted by the Hunk Club, uh, who said that they wanted to be a part of it, too. So we had already drawn the lines, and I don't think the Hunk Club was in that initial map. So...
I think they're...
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they want to participate, too. Of course, there's, um, voluminous bureaucratic things that have to be done at the state level for this to happen, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it comes to city council for us to vote on whether or not we want to see this happen. So I just wanted to bring it up here, so we could, I could kind of gauge where everybody is thinking about it, whether or not it's worth moving forward on. And honestly, Felicia Finch from the Hillsdale Brewery has been amazing with this, like, she's done all the research, she's looked into how it works in Tecumseh, uh, how it works specifically to Tecumseh, Marshall, and Coldwater. She brought all the resolutions that they did, included them, uh, in the paperwork. Since that point, I also talked to the mayor over Adrian to get a feel about how it works over there. All of our surrounding communities are doing the same thing. Seems to be working out well for people and... So any discussion, Councilman Stuccio?
How often would this happen? It's not like every night.
No, no, it would be up to us tonight. It would be up to us how much, and we can do it Fridays and Saturday nights, we can do it Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights.
So like during the weekend, during the summer, or stuff?
Yep. Yep, that's kind of the thought, yes.
And if I may, Mayor, there are...
Yeah, please take it.
And what I put in front of you was just some of the, some information that I'd got on the Luddington Social District as well, and how they operate theirs. So typically, what happens is there's a, a particular cup that these establishments have to use, and it has to have a sticker on it, according to the state. And the, you have, the city council has to approve the district, and it goes to the state. And those that, that use those cups for folks to drink beverages in the district also have to apply for a permit. I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars to the state. But, so, any one wonky women in the district, if they're having a beverage, an adult beverage, they would have this cup that has, that's readily disguised, you know, they can disguise it, disguise it, but...
Discerned.
Discerned, yes. Discerned, um, and then, um, they could not take one cup from one establishment. I read this today, you can't take your cup from Hillsdale Brewing and go in to the Pub and Grub with that cup. You have to stay in the common area, which is out in the street or sidewalk. Just based on the state statute, which is kind of odd to me, but that, that is one of the requirements. So there are a number of requirements, but we've gotten management plans from other cities, how they do it. And, you know, like Mayor said, we've got three or four that we can learn from and, you know, look at bringing something forward if the council would like to.
I'm just really excited with all our downtown restaurants and businesses, and now with the Don, that they all want to work together, and I, I think that's really exciting.
I just, I just got echo, I didn't get an email, negative side.
I did, too. I got...
I mean, in terms of trash, in terms of having a dump cup, you know, I mean, we said, we, so those type of things. And that has to be part of your plan, you submit to the state. In fact, it's in, in the Luddington information, it has their management plan. One of the things they do is they actually run it through their DDA, which is like our tip-up. And then, basically, the businesses buy the cups from the DDA there, and there's a fee, and then they use that fee to, for the additional trash pickup, for the signs that, and the policing of the district. So they, they...
Kind of self-help.
Yeah.
Hey, yeah, let's do that.
We want to make the town Don vibrant. There's another way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we can, you know, we can eat these. It's not, I don't...
Look at Hillsdale right now on Friday and Saturday nights at six o'clock, looks like Dodge City dead at night. I'm not picking on the business, but you don't, and there's nothing going on really in Hillsdale.
And, and we all live here, too. None of us want trash or...
Not much.
Right, exactly. None of us want...
Throw baseball from the downtown and hit my house.
Right, 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 right. So we have a great incentive to... They came this...
After the parade, I saw, I mean, I saw trash, because it was formed, and everybody made their...
But they made their way over.
Yeah, I think that most of the people really did a nice job keeping the city's clean.
Councilman Soha?
So I tend to like the idea. I did get, uh, in a conversation with Rick Trociano, he would appreciate being included in it, if we could maybe make the Bobby's Channel an extension of it.
Yeah. That's gonna be, it's gonna be tough to pull that into. I mean, we, it really...
How about a tent?
Because then we gotta make, yeah, then we gotta make El Cerritos part of it, and then you got to walk into...
Why not have a tent? I mean, something to do, and to be...
Well, let's, I'll, let's have a, let's have the committee by proxy contact Rick and see if there's some way to work into that.
And you could have multiple districts, and just that, like, that could, his location could be a little far.
Yeah, when you start getting in the car, I think you don't know.
Yeah, that's, that would work.
Yeah. But, but we can talk to him.
Yeah.
He would work.
You're one of those pedal cars. The bars, that's not like pedal, bar, bar. Good idea, though. Good idea, Eric. Good idea.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I talked to somebody, uh, I talked to a guy that does, um, carriage rides. And if, if we do this, he wants to come downtown with a horse and carriage on those nights, and carriage people around, so...
If you have him drunk here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, too.
Yeah, and Mayor, just, just so everyone knows, my office through Kelly LaPresta has been working with that girl.
Awesome.
So she's been part of all those discussions as well.
Councilman Beer?
Um, I'm just kind of curious, so how would you, as far as on the, the social district? So you could buy it with it in a container, like the Pub and Grub, and you could wander down the street with that container? Is that what, and then, and then we would decide where those common areas are?
Mostly what I've seen in these, the common areas is basically the sidewalk.
Yeah, there's sidewalks and crosswalks.
Okay.
Councilman Breyer?
I was in Luddington last week. As far as this goes for the social district, you know, it's, it's mainly used for big events and stuff that, that downtown. So like the foodie walk would be a, a good one to be able to buy a beer at the Hunk Club and then go and get food from each location. So it's, you know, something, but it's not going to be like, hey, it's just a normal Friday night, people are out wandering the streets and doing crosswalk, or walks with beer in their hand, you know? And you can't take them in other establishments. So it's, it's more or less for, like, if you do something downtown, that there's a social district where you can walk outside, have your beer outside. So I, I think it's a good idea. I don't think people will abuse it. So, I mean, I was up there, I didn't see anybody abusing it up there, so.
Other than you?
Other than me, yeah.
And we can revoke it at any time, um, and then I think the legislation actually sunset some twenty-four unless it's extended.
Yeah.
It was a COVID idea.
Yep.
It was.
A very recent development, but, you know, we've got, I mean, you guys know, we've got so many people right now working on trying to bring the downtown back to life, and it's a good, I just like seeing so many people want to work together, honestly, so. I think if they want to do this, I'm all in support of it. So we don't need to vote on anything tonight, but, but we continue moving in that direction and try to not get weighed down by the here paperwork and... All right. Any more discussion? Okay, well, we'll move on. We've got no miscellaneous reports at all, so we'll go into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your trips to one of the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and during this time, you may speak on anything your heart desires. Podium's now open.
Good evening, council. So I, I just wanted to throw something out here, speaking of evictions and extended court updates. How is a felon on active probation, they'll have to hold a, a seat in this council? I just wanted to throw that out there, and we have my support. As far as the downtown district, I find it comical for the Don, I mean, for the Hope House to be, you know, irrational and nuisanceful, and then we have a bunch of drinking people, and it's totally acceptable because they're spending money. Anyway, I just thought, I thought I'd throw that out there. I'm all for getting that money, though, I guess, if you feel that that's the way you want to do it. But my main thing to say tonight was, I'm glad that the VPU people came in here and explained that the money had been allocated, not abused and not used, and that was my main objective, you know, to figure out what exactly was going on with our money, or other people's money to say, to say that. And to bring up my concerns about a active probationary felon taking a seat. And to bring up my concerns about a active probationary felon taking a seat in a, in a town where we just went through COVID, and we went through an extended amount of time where nobody was working, and I just feel like that's threatening. So, um, thank you all for being here. That, I hope that made sense.
Thank you, Carla.
Yep.
Any more public comment?
Yeah, Reverend Dennis Swincomb, uh, I'm using that because what I'm asking tonight is the night before, uh, election. And I posted out there on Facebook and different places about, uh, call of the eleventh hour. And, uh, what I'm asking each and every one within the sounding of my voice that's in this room, those that can hear me on the internet, that at eleven o'clock, that you pray for our election. We don't need anymore, anything else to happen like happened in twenty-twenty. We need God-fearing, God-loving people with wisdom and knowledge to run our, uh, governments, to run our boards, and, uh, we need people out there that are willing to pray for each and every one. And I'm asking you and everybody else that can hear me to, at eleven o'clock, pray for our upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any more public comment?
Hi, good evening, um, councilmen and women. How are you this evening? Um, my name is Lisa Wallace. I'm a Hillsdale County resident. I've lived in Moscow Township pretty much my entire life. I am heading for Hillsdale County Road Commission. Um, if anybody has any questions later after the meeting, I will be more than happy to tell you how I stand on things and, um, the concerns and issues that I feel that very needly to be addressed. Um, Hillsdale County residents deserve better roads, period. I, I truly believe we pay enough fuel tax, we pay enough registration fees, we deserve better roads. Um, I don't think it's an issue anymore that we want to tolerate. Um, I just put my hat in to run for this. Um, personally, it was the right time for me. I have eight years of construction background, two and a half years of underground experience. I worked my way from the bottom up. I'm probably the only nurse that I know that can run a backhoe, has a CDL Class A. Um, I went to, back to school again, got a business management degree from Spring Harbor University. I'm a Republican conservative, and I want better for our community, and now was the time, now that my children are grown and my youngest is in college, it was the time for me to get involved, and I had the time to dedicate to do this. Um, I've been diligently going to, uh, township meetings, going to the road commission meetings, getting involved, getting informed, and hearing what people had to say, and I appreciate what people bring to me, and I hope that I can make a change for Hillsdale County. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the podium. Oh, sorry, I just couldn't get up in time. Well, go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and folks, good evening to you. You know, there's homeless prevention, we've got to start looking at it. You know, you mentioned earlier about the Community Action Agency, you know, receiving the funds. I was just talking with them out in the hallway. I was very concerned about where this is gonna lie, especially when we're gonna start looking at this new, I'm talking about as being BS tax. This tax for the senior center is outlandish and idiotic. Um, on the other hand, just to see where it's gonna land at, this kind of money is, is unnecessary. Uh, I did want you to kind of look at was the Latium, uh, Watkins. Um, that issue came up, that was under the coronavirus issue. There was a lot of people that were not fed. Excuse me, I want to make sure I shut this thing off. Thank you. Um, uh, and so a lot of people were denied hospitalization and such, and, uh, under the Latium and Watkins came up, uh, and it is across the United States, it's one point nine trillion dollars that was given. So that's something of interest. The other was, uh, Mr. Sosha, is that correct? Uh, thank you for listening. I want to add that too. Thank you. And, uh, this gentleman over here is Stotchel?
Stutzel.
Stutzel, pardon me. Um, I was there the, the evening, I was gonna make mention to you. I don't know how sensitive the skin is, I'm, um, not Jack, but I, I was there. The other is, um, as far as what's going on with the, um, issue with the county, I don't know where that's gonna go to as far as wanting to put the Circuit Court, uh, this new Circuit Courthouse together, taking it all the way down, or it's just gonna be a certain portion. Uh, they trumped around the four point six million that the county just got in new monies, and possibly apply that, uh, which is for the upper bell area and the clock and so on. And, uh, again, I don't see ten million dollars, which is what their range is, to actually do the whole building. I think that's, um, wrong. I'm, again, I'm all for trying to get a building for all three of the judges, and I think that this annexed building could possibly be removed, and we could put a two-story there with this four point six million dollars. And I'm all for them getting this done, but they have dragged their feet at that county for this money, and I think it's necessary to get it done. So first off, thank you very much for listening, and, and associate, I do thank you for that. First of all, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any more public comment?
Good evening. Tomorrow is the big day, August second. Um, Tuesday, primary election day. And while I am running unopposed, I am very excited and am looking forward with eager anxiety, anticipation for a good result. I, um, have worked hard to earn votes, um, to be reelected, and I certainly do look forward to get me through tomorrow, get me through November, and serve it again for another two years. So thank you very much. Go vote, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we will close the podium and move into the city manager's board. Dave?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things I want to mention, um, as you have in front of you, we do have an internet meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM. If we have you, we'd like to attend. We have a representative from Mayor that will be there to talk about, uh, maybe improving, yes, it's in this room, uh, improving our internet access. Also for Bruce.
It.
Um, we do have the sound system equipment ordered, so it's on order. Um, we're hoping probably in August, September, we're able to install it and, and get the sound corrected here with, of course, the, you know, supply issues, particularly electronics and chips. It has caused a little bit of issue, but, uh, we are working with Playford, Playford Music on this, so. So we should, we have that equipment ordered and should be getting this resolved soon. As everyone has indicated, the election is tomorrow, and Katie had indicated to me that she had, uh, issued four hundred and sixty-three absentee ballots, which is a pretty good number. And then she's already received three hundred and eighty-one of those back, and then has another eighty-two yet to receive. So, um, that's four hundred and sixty-three folks who, who are voting. So, uh, so that, that is, uh, pretty good just for absentees compared to where we used to be, um, a number of years ago before COVID. Anything positive, it has promoted that, getting more votes in the system. Um, hopefully they're, they're, that being said, um, this Friday, we do have a summer in the city here downtown, and that's from four to eight. So the car show and other events on that, um, evening. And as part of that, after that, the VPU has the movies in the park, uh, at nine forty-five at Stocks Park, where they'll be showing Clifford the Big Red Dog for young, young ones. Um, and on Saturday, the Will Carlton Farm Festival is going on from ten to three. Um, so it's a busy weekend coming up. Um, and lastly, just to report on, uh, the activity at the airport and the fuel. So last year, for the month of July, we sold about two thousand two hundred and thirty-eight gallons of jet fuel. This year, we've sold over twenty-eight hundred gallons of jet fuel, so that's gone up. And then last year, we sold nine hundred and sixty-two gallons of, um, just regular low-led, uh, plain fuel. And this year, we've already sold, or that month, July, we already sold twice that, it was eighteen hundred and fifty gallons of low-led fuel. So the airport continues to do very well and, um, proceed to cover itself out there. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have. If there are any questions, Bruce?
We'll start with the Myers. What else have you heard from Myers, other than, I've seen the water department was out there by Bex, and some, I remember I was with a cable guy who was out there too one day, kind of walking the path, so things are going good so far?
Yep, they're moving forward, uh, with the design and engineering, with all the infrastructure, the water. Particularly because they agreed to upsize that. Um, they're also have to move those electric poles, and they're taking care of that. Um, so, um, I think the hope is that some of this activity can happen later this fall and potentially move forward with construction next year.
First of all, so when they'll open, do you think?
I don't know the answer to that. Forward. It would probably be that time, if, if things move, continue to move forward the way they are.
Road work, that was another question I had.
What was that?
Lynnwood Street and all that, that's still on schedule for this month?
Yep.
Chip seal. You know, Norwood Street is one I was really concerned with. Norwood Street itself, that was one of the streets where we're gonna chip seal. Would school kept getting closer and closer, or is it gonna make the timeline, or is it gonna be?
I'm not sure on that, Bruce, because that, for this year, um, that'll be a question when Kristen gets back, uh, next week. But, uh, as part of that chip seal project, part of it was funded through a grant.
Right.
So we haven't received notification of that grant yet, but, um, I anticipate that will be later this summer.
Yeah, I'm just concerned the school getting closer and closer. We do that, then you gotta create a big mess on that street.
We're cognizant of that, yeah, trying to not create problems.
Good, that's what I had.
Any more questions for Dave? Councilman Calmout, anybody have anything to share? Councilman Breiner?
Um, just, uh, when Mr. Maggie was talking about the, the airport, um, I just want to put out there that the fly-in breakfast that the Exchange Globe puts on, and then the fly-in, um, that the city handles their side of that. Um, it's September eleventh this year, it's a Sunday. Uh, the breakfast will be going from about seven AM to probably eleven or noon. Um, and then the actual fly-in is from seven AM until two PM. Uh, we'll have the Huey helicopter out there again this year, um, giving rides, and then we'll have another airplane and another helicopter out there. Um, so, um, usually we have a cruise-in, um, so it's, it's good times, free event, um, just to come to look at the airplanes. Uh, breakfast itself is seven dollars for adults and four dollars for children. So if you do want to have breakfast, you can. Um, all those funds go to help the Exchange Globe, uh, do things in the community. And then, uh, like I said, the fly-in itself is actual, a free event to actually go in and look at the airplanes, the fly-ins. So last year, I think we had a pretty good turnout last year for airplanes, so, um, we're buzzing over there.
It was a really awesome event last year. Yep, Summer in the City is Friday, four to eight, downtown, car show, all that stuff.
Farmer's Market's doing well.
Yep.
They were actually in the parking lot for this last Saturday, was a good shot. They didn't have the materials, so they got to go back and park it up, but make sure you get out there to support the people. It's gonna be on Saturday.
Yeah.
Get to talk to the people. There are some very interesting people that are, I mean, we've got some good stories to tell.
Sure. Will Carlton had, uh, the for-off, Will Carlton Porthouse has something this weekend, right?
Yeah, Saturday.
Saturday?
From ten to three.
From ten to three, okay.
So get your cookies and go to Will Carlton.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. So, Councilman Breiner reminded me, um, of Paul or Shu Dixon. I don't know if you're aware, but the last four weeks has had international competition with hundreds of shooters, including the United States Shooting Team, and people have come from over six countries to compete there. And, uh, the US shooters are actually competing to be on the national team. And, uh, it's just something we ought to consider because they had RVs parked out there, they had, um, people that drive in with RVs that couldn't find a place to, to hook up. Uh, they were struggling there, so they were parking in people's yards and stuff that were being very generous. We have a real, uh, wonderful facility out there. It's world-renowned, it's, it's gonna get bigger and bigger as time goes on. And I think we should just keep that in the forefront of our mind and be in communication with them. So when these events happen, maybe we could take better advantage of having those people from six different countries here for a month. And, um, those things are just gonna increase over time.
And so your cheaper house is four.
It's one of the reasons, but, and then the other, if I may, um, as far as, um, Farmer's Market, uh, the city ran out of barricades, uh, because we have so many road projects going on right now. And so the Farmer's Market, thankfully this week it didn't work, but they were scrambling trying to find, um, barricades. So it might be something for us to consider if we have some set aside that we could rent for those type of projects, or, um, just have available when, like Kevin is doing his thing at the park, or the Farmer's Market. Because as I understand it, they're gonna petition us here at the next meeting to, uh, actually close Hal instead of, uh, and have Hal in front of all the businesses where the Farmer's Market is.
All right, very good. Councilman Soloff?
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Speeding's adjourned.